I would like to call the September 2nd, 2025 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday. Mumgarden. Gaines. Glover. Fanslaw. Hoke. Stube. Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, and do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. I hope you all had a great Labor Day weekend. If you need another sign that the summer season is officially ending, city staff has begun meeting with the Papillion Community Foundation for the Winter Wonderland Coordination and Planning Meetings, and it's never too early to mark your calendars for Winter Wonderland, and that will be Saturday, November 29th. Mayor Black and I attended the League's Larger Cities Legislative Committee meeting last week in Lincoln. Four of Papillion's legislative proposals are being considered this year, along with proposals from other municipalities, and we're still pushing for more transparency with the state incentive programs and pursuing the intent of the voters on the voters' half-cent sales tax. Other cities are starting to struggle with that as well, so Mayor Black and I will be on a league task force to look at ways to continue to attempt to address those concerns and to bring awareness to the state on those problems that the municipalities are facing. And with that, I just want to hit some quick highlight and some high-level updates. There's a lot going on with the city. None of these are new projects, but just to update where we are in them. The Police Department rebuttal and expansion, that continues to progress and remains on schedule and within budget. The City Park Project, work continues behind the scenes with the ordering and the manufacturing of the products, and indications are that we'll be hearing soon on FEMA on our Section 408 permit, and we'll be able to continue with the construction phase, and I believe that's a direct quote, "any day now," so we're still holding on to that. The water treatment plant and Clearwell upgrades, that is also nearing completion as well. There's some repair work at the plant that needs to be completed due to some recent storms, but the new upgrades are almost complete and have greatly enhanced our water operations there. And Papio Bay, design continues. We're nearing 60% design completion, and we will be coming forward here shortly in the next couple of meetings to seek permission to pursue a C-MAR, a Construction Manager at Risk process for the next phase of that project. And then the Library Master Plan, the focus groups start in two weeks after the meetings with the council members, and the consultants did indicate that they received a record number of respondents back for the survey, although the results, the number of results were lower than we had internally hoped for, and I don't have the exact number, we'll have that at the meetings in two weeks, but they were surprised at how many we had, so I guess that's a great indication. But then, we'll have more on that after those. And then, just a final reminder that the Fiscal Year 25-26 Budget Public Hearing is tonight, 7:30 PM or immediately following this city council meeting, whichever is later. Mayor Black will give the budget presentation, which is required to have the governing body give a presentation during that public hearing, so if anyone is here from the public that's planning to speak for that, just know if Mayor Black runs through the meeting really quick, the public hearing is actually after this meeting, so you did not miss your opportunity. It is a special meeting immediately following the regular meeting. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
A, yes, zero, and S.
Motion passes. Next is Item D1, Ordinance 2066, an ordinance to rename Chapter 104 of the Papillion Municipal Code to amend curfew hours, amend Section 104-7, and to create criminal violations for aggressive panhandling and disorderly conduct. Is there a council member to introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Item E1, Ordinance 2065, an ordinance to approve fiscal year 2025-2026 management exempt salary ranges. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Item F1, Ordinance 2063, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2063? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Fanslaw. Any council discussion? Please vote.
A, yes, zero, and S.
Motion passes. F2, Resolution R. 250168, a resolution to approve the deed of right-of-way dedication for Metro Crossing Drive. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 250168? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilwoman Hoke. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
A, yes, zero, and S.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. The F and A Committee did meet. Mr. Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. The items we discussed at F and A meeting tonight was, first of all, we reviewed the upcoming Keno Agreement renewal. There's very little change. As a result, unanimously, we will recommend to the full council, say, approve it. It should be on the next council agenda, and just as a note, it's really important that we get it done on the next council agenda because it expires October 1st, so we need to get that addressed in the next council meeting. Also, we discussed the master fee schedules, including the landing, and there are some changes there regarding some credit card fees and other items, cleanup items, and there's some adjustments to the, some of the annual fee, some of the fee schedule, I should say, and the annual and membership, I shouldn't say annual, the membership fees, we would like to have them go into effect January 1st of 2026. The other miscellaneous fees for rentals and things like that, it's not quite as pressing, and we didn't really establish a date certain to try to get those done, but we did decide to approve unanimously all the recommended changes that the Recreation Director passed along to us. The other thing that we talked about was the Building Department, they make a change in the fee, the credit card processing people. We normally pay that, but we found with higher volume, more expensive permit fees by us, the way we pass things along and so forth, it resulted in some of the people getting the fee, or companies getting the fees, were really benefiting at our expense, and that'll be explained in the meeting, too. We recommended unanimously to approve that as well. And finally, the Public Works Department talked to us about cellular meter monthly service fee, which is really minimal, and then saving some of the water tap inspection fees, and we recommend we approve that as well when it comes before the council. And that is it for the business we consider tonight, Mayor.
Thank you very much. No other committees have met. Any comments from the floor? Seeing none? Council comments? Last couple of weeks, I think everybody had an opportunity to do the tours, Police Department, Fire Department, but if you did not, let Robin know, and she can help get that scheduled if you didn't get one of those tours. Ms. Powers mentioned, we had a Legislative Committee meeting with the League of Municipalities, and so we're going to keep working those agenda items that, I think it was before the last special session, I'd given you guys a couple of-page outline of the things we were working on, and so those are still in play. If you get any questions on those, let me know. Ms. Powers, Ms. Andal and I, we had a meeting over at the Community Foundation with Ms. Bruna, the new Executive Director. Again, just continuing to build the relationship with new leadership there. That went very well. Excited about some of the things they're talking about. Then, I think I'd send everybody a note that with the agenda item that was introduced tonight about aggressive panhandling, Channel 7 did reach out for an interview, so that interview was yesterday, so if you have any questions on that. I've had one question, and just somebody said you're outlawing panhandling. No, we're not. Panhandling is actually a, it's a First Amendment issue, but when it crosses line into aggressiveness. So, if somebody's been asking you, and you tell them no, and then you tell them no again, and you tell them no again, and you tell them no again, when does it become harassment? If you're standing in ATM and somebody's approaching you, there might be a safety concern. That's aggressiveness. Somebody in the street, public safety issue. So, we define very clearly those items that are aggressive. So, if you get questions, let me know, but the interview, I think KTV did a good story on it, so I appreciate them reaching out. If, there's about eight or nine different events coming up. Take a look at the Administrator's Report that was in the packet on the first page for those items on the calendar, and other than that, I don't think I have anything else for this meeting. As a reminder, we do have the budget hearing. That is published as a 7:30 meeting, so we won't start early, so we'll get a little bit of a break. With that, any other council comments? Motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
A, yes, zero, and S.
We are adjourned. We'll pick up right at 7:30. I would like to call the Tuesday, September 2nd Budget Hearing Meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday. Mumgarden. Gaines. Glover. Fanslaw. Hoke. Stube. Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
Current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We just have one agenda item. It's Item B1, Ordinance 2064, an ordinance to approve the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. It's a public hearing, and just before opening the public hearing, some of the, some of the, this meeting is actually in state statute of being a separate meeting, that's why it was published separately, and part of the meeting is, we're required to give a budget presentation, and so we'll follow the same format as we did the last couple of years, basically just a summary of the budget letter that you already have, so it'll take a little while, and then we'll open it up for public hearing. So, for the, for the presentation, I want to give a high-level overview, and first, I want to thank the staff. The work starts early, putting the budget together, and really, a lot of it from a staff perspective, the heavy liftings in the spring, and it's nice to see them all working together across the city and not in their silos, so I appreciate the staff on that. I really appreciate the guidance and the discussion at the council retreat. You know, historically, I do the one-on-one meetings to give overview and what's it looking like and getting the feedback, but since we were together for the council retreat, we did that all together, and it was some really good discussion, and some of that actually did end up influencing the budget, so I appreciate the ideas that came forward. And you also reiterated the council mission, vision, values, and goals, and those play a big role in the budget, so again, I appreciate that. The budget was formally published to the public on August 8th and introduced at the last council meeting on the 19th. State statute does require the budget presentation at this hearing, but we do try to go beyond that a little bit from a transparency, so the budget letter has been out in the public room for about three weeks, so I appreciate that, but I'll go ahead and review the letter. We're in a healthy cash position, and it's kind of the theme of the last few years, we've got a lot of unknowns from a fiscal perspective, but with those, we do believe we're in a pretty healthy position. Biggest one we talk about a lot, and I'll mention a couple of times, is the loss of the voter-approved half-cent sales tax because the state takes that for incentives they give to other businesses. We've got what's going on with the national economy, federal government funding sometimes being cut, that we might be using some of that, and then the state itself is trying to figure out tax and fiscal policy, and some of that, they've been taking some cash funds from some programs that were meant for local municipalities, so we've got some unfunded programs. So, we've got a lot of impacts as tax policy's being figured out, but we're trying to do the best we can to manage through those. In the last four years, what really has helped us tremendously in that period of unknowns is that sales tax and use reserve policy that the council approved quite a while ago. That's what's allowed us to build up the cash reserves now to navigate this period, so I really, really appreciate your foresight on that, and it's because of that, we've been able to lower the levy the last four to five, about four to five years, and that's always the big question, what's going on with property tax? The current year, the city is about 19.8% of the property tax bill. Education is 61%, and counties and the others are the other 19%. And while we didn't see the large increase in valuation this time that we've seen the last three to four years, happy to share that we do still reduce the levy a little bit, and will still be the lowest levy, we believe, of all of the communities in Douglas and Sarpy County, and if somebody says, yeah, you lower the levy, but the valuations went up, so you still got more money, there's always that discussion, levy or valuation. I think one of the best gauges of what's appropriate is what the state legislature has currently said what's appropriate. They've set a threshold of what's allowable growth, and if you go beyond what they think is allowable, that's when that pink postcard joint hearing kicks in, and we've never gone to that joint hearing, and we don't anticipate going to the joint hearing this year. So, if I'm talking to legislature, I'd just say that implies we're staying below the growth that they say is appropriate, so I think we're managing conservatively and appropriately there. And on the revenue side, the sales tax reserves, remember last, we've grown to the point in the last 10 years where sales tax has exceeded property tax, and that's one of the reasons we've been able to lower the property tax. And then, you remember the last, it was last year's budget, that we budgeted that we were getting zero sales tax because of the state incentive programs, but we had built up some cash reserves, knowing that that could occur, and that's what we tapped into last year. We're doing that again this year. We've got enough of those notices that we're foregoing a lot of sales tax. So, the sales tax reserve, you'll see that in the budget, that's pulling from that cash reserve in lieu of getting it from the state, and that's about 21% of our total revenue. That's our largest revenue item. That is about a $10.1 million offset in general funds and about a $4.9 million and a half cent sales tax. So, from the levy perspective, we'll lower to .366 per 100, and that's based on preliminary valuations, not the certified ones, so there's always a little bit of a chance that gets changed slightly. But again, that's under that state level of going to the joint hearing. Our current valuation is about $4.4 billion, and that generates about $8.66 million in general fund revenue. On the general fund expense side, no surprise, personnel is our largest expense, and it takes about 70% of our general fund budget is personnel, and the wage increases and the health benefits, those are consistent with the union agreements that you had already approved. Remember, we did four-year agreements, so we're in that cycle, so we're just following the contracts there, and then for management exempt employees, budgeting 3%, which is generally in line with the union contracts, and there are some increases for job performance and job comparability studies that might be going on. And then, legislature did pass the minimum wage bill, so we budgeted for that with the part-time employees to meet the state minimum wage. And then, health insurance and dental, consistent with prior years. We don't get our exact numbers until late in the process, so for budget planning, we estimated a 15% increase. It sounds high, but we've had that level of increase before. Hope it comes in under, but we're going to budget at the 15. A few staff positions we talked about, these are consistent with what we talked about at the retreat, three full-time firefighters, and that was in line with the union agreement that we had signed, finance manager, a youth service librarian in addition to the Parks Department, one additional police officer, and then a sergeant as a school resource officer, police, in the Police Department, and then continue to invest in some supervisor and leadership development training. On the public safety side, biggest portion of the budget, police and fire. Main thing in police, they do retain the Kalia certification. We've gone through that accreditation cycle several times now, and so we're keeping that in the budget. And then, most of what's going on with the police is with the current facility, and that's already budgeted and underway, so nothing really new in the budget from the facility perspective. Fire, remember that we run the Fire Department for three different agencies, so the City Papillion has the budget for the Fire Department, but then the expense is shared with the Papillion Rural Fire and the City of La Vista, and so those other two agencies will fund about 65.5% of the fire budget, and then some fees will cover about another 8%. The budget you'll see includes purchase of land for Station 5. We don't have a site identified, we're just getting the money allocated for that, so nothing's been approved, no site selection done, but we are anticipating that into the future, so we want the dollars set aside there. And then, there's replacement of an ambulance. On the street side, for the sixth, I think it's the sixth year in a row, doing the pavement management plan with the UBUS project, I think all the feedback we get is people are liking that, and it seems to be holding up over the winter as well, so we're budgeting that again. If you remember, when we implemented that program, we anticipated $2 million a year for 10 years. Because of inflation now, that has increased to about $2.67 million, and we've got, we've got that budgeted, so we're still staying on track with that original program. And then, in addition to the UBUS, we've got about $249,000 just for general pothole and street repairs that we do every year, and then, like the last three years, that is not funded by debt, so we're paying out of cash for those items, so we're not incurring any new debt on that. And then, the street budget also includes some software upgrades and traffic signal upgrades, those are fairly routine every year, but we don't want to get behind, and then some funds to maintain some of the aging infrastructure, and then some, a little bit of additional equipment to manage growth. Some, no major initiatives, just kind of keep doing the same. And then, more generally, remember the OPPD pilot fee that's in lieu of sales tax, and we committed a portion of that going to the South Sarpy Sewer Agency to help jumpstart some of the infrastructure, so if you see that in the budget, that's our, that's the normal agreement that we had to contribute some of those fees for the, for the expansion south of the ridgeline. We've got our normal support that we've had every year for some of our partner organizations, the Papillion Community Foundation and Grow Sarpy, our Economic Development Corporation, and then we've got some carryover funding for downtown revitalization, and some, then some normal things, software program costs, IT upgrades, computer rotations, still outsourcing our IT services to Sarpy, that's been a very good relationship, and so we'll continue to budget for that. A little bit of Parks equipment, and then some funding for some new Motorola radios. Remember, last year, we had a big issue with Motorola radios, and we had to have a, kind of a wholesale replacement in the Fire Department, so we'll be getting some radios for police, public works, and parks, so they all have the interoperability with the Motorola. On the capital improvement plan, about $4.37 million in funding on CIP, and at a high level, a dump truck, three police vehicles for the rotation program, annual traffic signal upgrades, siren upgrades, public works maintenance equipment program, a shop expansion at Walnut Creek that we talked about, some trail development, some channel stabilization of the creek, 90th Street, some work to support development north of Highway 370 that we'd committed to, and then, again, as we discussed at the council retreat, 1.12 million of unrestricted sales tax reserves to move up just a few years the reconstruction of the Halleck Park road loop. So, that project had always been identified, but we're able to look at the dollars and figure out how to move it up and not jeopardize anything else. On the bond fund, it's approximately 19% down from prior year. Outstanding debt in the bond funds, about $86.9 million, and about 57% of that is for the voter-approved Papillion Landing, so a major portion of it's Papillion Landing, and total debt servicing excluding the landing's about $4 million, and our cash reserves in the bond fund remains pretty strong at about $7.6 million. So, the bond fund is funded, we're meeting our obligations, and no concerns on that side. Moody's did do another evaluation for us to give us our credit rating, and we were rated again at an AA1, which is investment grade, there's only, I think, one grade higher, and we were AA1 before, so they reiterated that, and that was an increase from AA2 in April of 2018, so even during the financial downturn, we've maintained our bond rating with Moody's, which is a good thing because that directly affects the interest rate we pay, so it does save us real dollars. As always, if interest rates come down, we'll look at refinancing to get better rates, but we don't anticipate any of that occurring in this next fiscal year. In the Recreation Fund, Papillion Landing and Field House are funded along with some of the non-revenue generating recreation programs. Again, we had some philosophical conversations about three years ago that if Papillion Landing did not exist, we still have a recreation program and programming, so we need to, we fund that out of the general fund, and so we're staying true to that philosophy that we had before. About $4.22 from the general fund for some of those non-programs, and then the recreation, we're budgeting about $9.64 for programming. Then, council retreat, the, we had a brief conversation, one of the council members raised about Sumter. When that was originally built, it was the only outdoor facility, so it was kind of identified and used one way, now there's a lot of those facilities, so how you use that has changed a little bit, and it was brought up that maybe we need to look at, kind of calling it Sumter 3.0, what's that look like? So, there's a little bit of money in the budget to work on that project, to get, test that out for next year. And then, the Water and Sewer Funds, proprietary funds, not using property tax dollars. Again, you approved this, just this last April, the new rate study, and that rate study sets the rates for the next five years, so the budget's just falling under the approved rate study. Couple of the projects in the Water Fund, got a meter replacement program, some emergency power upgrade for the South and Southwest Boosters, there's a new valve insertion equipment that are programmed in, some hydrant replacement, and then some fiber communication upgrades to the outlined sites. And then, on the Sewer Fund, again, some aging equipment, some sewer line maintenance, and then some sewer repairs on Mathews Street. And then, on the Sewer Fund, that is rated separately by Moody's because that's not general fund tax dollars, that has an AA2 rating, and that's been consistently at that level, so feel good about that. So, appreciate your approval of the study. The Golf Fund, again, not property tax dollars, it's proprietary fund, the revenue comes from normal operations, and again, consistent with philosophical discussions the last couple of years, a little bit of the fund is going to help with the debt on Eagle, and that's about $248,000, that's cash on hand that the golf itself had raised, and so we're using golf dollars for that purpose. The last of those bonds will be paid off in December of 2028, so it sounds like, as long as we've had that, it's not that long before that debt will go away, and that'll be a game changer at those courses. And then, we have a golf ad hoc committee made up of four council members, put that in place about four or five years ago to have oversight of the capital improvement program, and so the last time it met, where you reviewed those projects, and this budget is in line with that previous discussion. Upgrades to electrical for the pump station, HVAC system at Eagle Hills, pond erosion control, lease purchase of golf carts, payment on maintenance equipment, some tree work at both courses, some cart path work at Eagle Hills, and some irrigation repairs at both courses. So, I think that's in line with all of the discussions from the ad hoc committee. The voter-approved half-cent sales tax, the one that was on the ballot for Parks and Recreation to include a community center, that cannot be used for general operations, it has to be used for Parks and Rec, and the highest priority is funding of the bond to pay Papillion Landing, and so that is budgeted, and the required reserves are fully funded. And then, there's about $2.4 million, again, for a Halleck Park Road System and a parking lot project that was previously approved by council, and now we're just bringing that forward again based on the council retreat. About $750,000 for a Halleck Park Pavilion Playground, we talked previously about that, but again, bring that forward and accelerate that project. And then, just a reminder on that, the half-cent sales tax is voter-approved for a very specific purpose, and we cannot use it for anything other than that purpose, but the state can come along and take that money and use it for a different purpose, even though the voters approved it. So, we're keeping a watchful eye on the legislature. We know the state needs tools for economic development, we don't argue that, but if you remember, the half-cent sales tax had a sunset clause, it was approved for a very specific term and then goes away. Well, when the state takes those dollars for a couple of years, they don't extend that sunset, so we truly did lose a couple of years. So, we're trying to talk to them about, hey, if you took two years, can you extend maybe two years? two years on the sunset or figure out how to balance so we all stay whole? That's some of the legislative things that we're working on, but the budget does not assume that will change. On the community betterment fund, that's the Keno, so again, not property tax. Keno funds cannot be used for general operations, it has to be used for general community projects this year. Every year, we've taken the B-cycle Bike Station maintenance out of that fund, we're doing that again this year. We talked at the council retreat about potentially looking at an LB840 program, so we've got a few dollars in there to start evaluating that program. The funding to the Arts Foundation through the council-approved Memo of Understanding we've got with them. Winter Wonderland with the Community Foundation is funded out of that. With the redevelopment of the old public works site, we thought it was appropriate to put a large state historical marker on that building, like we've got in a couple other places downtown. That's funded out of the community betterment fund. Generator at the Memorial Library, some historic downtown building lighting, some trail development, and then fans at the Papillion Landing Field House. We started this last year, it used to be in prior years, there were some carryover dollars, so approved in one year's budget, the project's not done, you want to carry those dollars over to the next year's budget. We used to do that through an amendment after the fact. Last year, we started incorporating that into the budget. So if you see carryover from '24-'25, that is already authorized dollars, authorized projects, we just haven't gotten them done, so those carry forward. So just in closing, just want to thank the employees that serve our residents faithfully, professionally, diligently serve the community, support the mission, vision, values of the council. Those are kept, your goals are kept in front of everybody, so got a lot of dedication in keeping us going forward, even with a lot of those external factors that we can't manage. Want to thank the department heads, and we really got staff that care about Papillion, so I appreciate that a lot. Council members, really want to thank you. Again, it was your foresight on that reserve policy 10 years ago that has been absolutely critical, and appreciate working with us and giving clear guidance on the mission, vision, values, and goals. It's all of that that's allowed us to keep that lowest levy in the metro, so I appreciate that. Huge thanks to Amber and Mark, strong leadership. They've got tough jobs, they've got the reality of people needing things tomorrow, but the reality of the long-term and what's happened to property tax and sales tax and trying to balance short and long-term and making sure we're sustainable, so really appreciate their ability to balance that. Huge, huge thanks to Nancy for her fiscal management insights. I think she's the reason a lot of us sleep at night. So Nancy, thanks for everything you do. I tell people, I think we've got the best finance director in the state of Nebraska. Again, to the council, that cash reserve policy, I don't know how many times I can say it of how important that was. So again, just thank you for that. And then I think, I don't know if we announced it at the last couple of meetings, but that Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, that's a report that's put together that goes beyond the regular audit, and the idea of that extra report is for transparency. An audit can get pretty detailed and technical and not real readable. This extra document tries to put it into a readable format. And so Nancy, you've been doing that for probably 11 years or maybe even more, somewhere around there. But what's nice about that financial report, it's not mandated, we do that voluntarily, and then it gets sent off to an independent board to be reviewed for transparency. And then there's an award that can be given, and we've gotten that award 10 or 11 years in a row, and we just got it again last time. So again, Nancy, thanks for everything you do to keep us in a healthy environment. So back to the property tax levy. You can always argue, what's the value of a home? I just go to the US Census Bureau each year and say, what's a median house in Papillion in city limits? And they currently say it's $29900. And with our preliminary levy of $36.6, the median household would pay $1,065 a year, $88.72 a month in property tax. And I always say that's less than I think most people choose to pay for home internet or cell service. And for that, you're getting highest police and fire services, professional public works, streets, library, parks, recreation, planning, building administration. So we can always argue on property tax, are they higher, they're appropriate, but based on the environment we're in, I think we're at least giving value for the dollar, and I think that shows up in the surveying we do, and I think we're being responsible under the current rules. And again, I'm going to estimate that will still probably be less than 20% of the total property tax bill once everybody sets their levies. Again, you set the mission, vision, and values in the 2020 retreat. We had a retreat in 2023 and another one in 2025, and you have continued to reiterate those are our goals and our mission, and so we're working with those. Just want to thank you for your leadership, thank you for the cooperation. And that's the end of the presentation, and you should all have the full budget book. And then it's also, the letter and the presentation's also been in the public room, like I said, for about three weeks. So with that, we'll have a public hearing tonight, and then the next council meeting will be the vote and setting the levy. So I'll open the public hearing. Any proponents or opponents? Seen none? I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Council McGlover, second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote. We are adjourned.